So how the allocation of the CARES Act funding for the school year, which we've already briefed the board on of how those elements were taken out of the general fund and being allocated to the grant. That is required to be posted on the website for review so everyone can see what that is. And then for the American Rescue Plan, there will be an additional community engagement event for that. And so that will be a good opportunity for the community to see their federal funds, you know, and how it supplements what we're offering in school. In addition to that, each of the buildings are planning their end-of-the-year celebrations with students, and the principals are going to be sending home all of the information about that. But the good news is, is the guidelines are getting to a point where, you know, things like the prom will start to feel like a normal event. I did give to Dr. Davenport a whole box of testing kits, so any student who isn't fully vaccinated will have access to rapid testing so that they'll be able to, you know, enjoy that time together. And I think that's really great, considering where we all were one year ago today. So without further ado, I'm going to make an introduction. Are you all set?
We're all set.
Okay. So I'll just tell a little story. I have been doing as much as I can to reach out to teachers on a all-the-time basis, on a weekly basis, and Ms. Wheeler was kind enough to invite me into her class. She invites me down just to say hello, but she invited me into her media communications class. So I got to spend a period there, and they're working on headlines that day, and verbs in headlines to be more specific. And one of the sentiments that I expressed to the students that I just want to share with the board was how important it is for their voice in terms of them being advocates and to really making us aware of what is going on and what matters to young people. And I think that they've done a really good job of that. And I've often expressed, if you really want to know what's going on in the district, Ryan Beck Reality is where to get the source of that. So at that session, I had said, you know, would you be willing to come to the board to just share what it's been like over this past year to keep this important element of student voice active throughout the pandemic? And she graciously said yes, and she's here tonight with students from the class, and I'm thrilled. So welcome to Ms. Wheeler.
Thank you so much to the board, and thank you to Mr. Cousins. I'm just going to introduce Ryan Millen, who has been with us since she was a freshman. And she came in that first class with so many ideas. All of the, you know, older students in the room were just sort of like, okay. And she just kind of stepped in and has been a powerhouse ever since. And she and a few other juniors will be our editors next year. So she can talk a little bit about this year, and anything else you want to kind of, you know, share.
Hello, like she said, I'm Ryan. I am a junior at the school. I've been with the paper since freshman year, and I've loved it ever since. Personally, for me, I didn't like writing. I dreaded it at all costs. If there was a paper due, I just couldn't write. I wasn't someone who could get words on a paper very easily. Those assignments came very hard to me. So joining journalism was very much on a whim. Like, why would I take a class to write more than I already don't like to write? Well, apparently that was a good call, because it's not that I didn't like writing. It's I didn't like being told what to write. And Ryan Beck Reality gave me the chance to write about topics that felt important to me. There was a school issue, or there was a topic that just needed to be addressed in the world, or there was opinion I wanted seen. The paper just gave me that opportunity. Ms. Wheeler especially, she consistently told me, write about what you want to write about. Is there a topic in the news right now that you just feel so strongly about? And I'm like, yes! And it came so easily to me. I didn't realize that I could write. I could write a lot. I could write these articles about these very important topics and be able to give the facts and give evidence and show viewpoints. And that was something very important to me. And Ms. Wheeler just taught me so much through these three years. I owe all of my writing success to her. And through this paper, I could see so much improvement from my most recent article, the Climate's a Backseat article. I did that with another junior, Al Hunter Dickens. And this article had, we, this was one of the hardest articles to write, because recycling is such a big topic. We had to talk about the world. Then we had to talk about what was going on in New York State. And then we had to get to, specific to, like, our area. And then we had to talk about Rhinebeck. It felt like so much, and I, at points, I didn't want to write it. I was, this is too much to cover. And Ms. Wheeler, she gave me the confidence to write this very hard topic that I personally didn't know much about before we chose it. I, she taught me so much, and I really owe this class so much. And I think I'm speaking for all the students in the class. We love it. We do it year after year. That's why there's so many consistencies with it. And we hope that next year, we'll have more freshmen join so that we can keep this school paper running and alive. It's just, I think it's one of the best parts of Rhinebeck, of Rhinebeck School. Thank you.
We share your passion. We did have some fun after this monster issue. And one of the highlights that everybody spoke about this year, Kai, if you feel like it, you want to share about that one, what is special about that one? Do you want to use the mic? I mean, compared to, like, our earliest, when I first started with the class. So, like, we have this one from 2017. That's the format. You can sort of, from a distance, see that it's really, like, almost like essays, right? And then if you want to show that one, like, open it up.
Bill, where you are. This is my article on love, and I'm based on my sibling. I have a younger brother back at home. And this is what I wrote about my brother and how much I loved him. And this is about times that issue. And I said, don't get to love your siblings. I wrote about how much I loved him.
And that was the first time we had all heard.
Yes, the first time we had heard, in the newspaper.
So that one's always going to get some chance.
Yes. So I have fully been involved in journalism for, like, two years, because I started last year. But like Ryan said, I can see, like, my own improvements in my own writing and also, like, editing a lot, because, like, obviously, this year I had the opportunity to edit other people's, and, like, I even worked on Ryan's article. And what's really nice about the class is, like, how collaborative it can be. And I know that, like, when Mr. Cousins came in and talked to us, we, like, talked about, like, showing that students, like, care and what that looks like. And I think that this year especially, that's been really hard, because obviously, like, we aren't having things in the auditorium, and we don't, like, see Dr. Davenport on a regular basis. Or, I mean, we do, like, not in the same way. So I think that one of the highlights of the paper, and one of just, like, the incredible things, is that not only can student writers in the club and in the class show that they care about things in the school, but that other students can. And, like, that looks like, you know, maybe, we have a bunch of people that, like, wrote, write an article who aren't even in the club, who aren't in the class, but they still can share their voice. Or people that, like, are maybe a little bit interested in editing, so they come in and do a little bit of that. Or, like, someone took a photo for a sports team. And I just think that it's, like, one of the biggest, or not, like, the biggest clubs, obviously, but I think that it has, like, most outreach, because a lot of people can be part of it without, like, making it their only thing. And yeah, I just think that showing that people care, and it's like, like Ryan said about the, like, Ms. Wheeler giving us the opportunity to write about kind of whatever we want. It's a way to communicate that we actually do see the issues in the school and that we've even noted them, and that we do care about them. So I think that that's been the best part of journalism for me. It's like just being able to put words on paper that I do care about the school and that I care about, like, bettering it.
Do you want to pass? Do you want us to show you how?
Yes!
Could you talk a little bit, in the beginning of the year especially, when we were phasing in, were there any challenges unique to the remote setting that you had to overcome? Or how did you, did you have any unique approaches?
Well, obviously, we didn't have the club on Zoom and stuff. And I know that in the beginning of the year, it was like, we had, like, three people in the yellow cohort, and then, like, seven in the other one. I even, like, switched cohorts so I could do it.
But more than that, you had editing teams?
Yeah, we had editing teams. At first, they were like, yeah, we had to change them, like, 10 times to, because it was, like, it was so scattered. There was, like, 10 people in the club, four people in one day, a bunch of people in the other. And it was definitely hard to, like, get all together and, like, have something that was working. And that's why I think that, like, in the past, for example, if you've done, like, bigger issues, but still, like, we did three, obviously, the Kaiser Mary was our Valentine's Day one. And that was, like, a shorter issue, but the first issue and then the one that you guys have now, they're, like, 12 pages, and they're, like, pretty real topics.
Because I know, I saw you had some of the most recent, but if you want to pass that, that's our September. And I think, yeah, in the future, it was surprising that by the end of the year, someone who I hadn't seen edit a whole bunch, I guess that's the one you have, jumped in and did a day of jobs. You had a photo I saw on yours. It was like, where have you been? You know, it was, it's hard to find out what you're good at unless you do a whole lot of things, because there's so many different things you do in the paper. So in the future, maybe smaller issues, we didn't make use as much this year of the online. Because it was just so much to do anything. You know, we focused on the print, and then, you know.
In past years, like, last year, we wrote a lot of collaborative online articles where, like, we'd come in and just give us a topic, and Kai would write the headline, and Ryan would write, deal with the quotes, and I'd write the body of it or whatever. So that was not possible this year, because we were so separated. But yeah, the first issues, like, we focused on a topic, which I think was, like, a strong suit that we did this year. So that was the first time. Yeah, right. We, like, talked about, like, equity. If you look at that interview that we discussed.
And you were front page. Your priorities were kind of the anchor for the paper. Yeah, so then I kind of helped a little bit. And that did, yeah, did bring us in. And then I just raised.
It's also hard to take photos of people in that. It's not as interesting. But that's also why, I would say that if you guys look at the back sides of both of them, there's Glee-less comics, and these are nice writers who is just incredible, and they look great. Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a black and white one, and then a color one. Oh, there's a color on all three of our issues. So it is because we couldn't have the real photos, we got to, you know, make that happen. But I think it's been really great.
I just want to say, I think it's a brilliant decision to have focused on the print at a time when everything was online. I think that it is, you really did the, it was, it's a brilliant decision. To provide relief to that, it's really awesome. And I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Wheeler for connecting, like, with Ryan's statement about choice and learning how, like, having that choice can stimulate your motivation. That's such an important lesson for us, to understand, like, that magic of being a writer was always there. And I want to, you know, thank you, Ms. Wheeler, for understanding how, when given the right conditions and environment, it can flourish. So, thank you for that.
Thank you so much for coming.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming to our board. Thank you for putting our board priorities in the newspaper. We're always happy to get good press. But thank you for coming out tonight. It was really great to hear about the work that you're doing. And this is a, this is a nice article, a nice edition. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for the board to head out?
No, just thank you.
Same, I'd just like to say thank you. I mean, I've really read this cover to cover during a time when, as a parent, I felt so sort of isolated from what was happening in the school, even as a board member to some degree, and sort of see what was important to you guys during this time and what you were covering. And to see that the students have had such great leadership from you is really inspiring. And not only is the content interesting and great, but the layout is just, I think it's, like, the best local publication, so thank you.
Thanks again for coming.
Thank you guys for having us.
Okay, we have an opportunity for public comments. See, no public comment. We're going to move on to our next report, and that would be our Intersalaska Athletics. Mr. Boushia?
So cute.
I could project.
Here, you want to? Pass them around. Yes.
So, yeah, we usually do this in January, February. It's a lot warmer and a lot busier right now. Intersalaska Athletics. When I was coaching, I always started each practice with a saying. And one that really stands out for this year for me is, you can't stop the ways that you can learn to surf. And I think that we've really had to kind of change the way we surf almost every day, it seems. Intersalaska Athletics is something that I value very much, and I make sure that I pass that along to anybody who's willing to listen to me. I see coaching no different than teaching. It's just my classroom changes. And the lessons that a student can learn on the field, on the court, in the pool are as important, if not, I'm not going to say more important, than history lessons, of course, but equally important. And it's really important, and that was kind of reemphasized for me this year when we came back. And it was great. We opened up, and we were one of the only districts to open up, but school was different. You know, it was kind of like kids were just, like, walking through the motions. And people would see me, when can we play? When can we play? When can we play? So, I guess I can't project anywhere. Which one am I using here? This one? Maybe I have. There we go. I don't know what I'm doing. So we are governed by, you know, a few different bodies. NISPA, New York State Public High School Athletic Association, Section 9, and then the Mid-Hudson Athletic League. Before we even got to school, there were numerous discussions at the state level, at the section level, about what we were going to do. I spoke with Albert at length. Albert was all for, let's play sports. We're in school, we should play sports. Unfortunately, there were only two or three schools in our area that were willing to do that. So the section decided, we're going to put a pause on all athletics in the fall. And they decided to adjust all of the seasons. Now, I mean, you all probably know this, so I'm just kind of, you know, setting the stage here. When kids heard that, they were kind of deflated. And my job, as I saw, was to do everything I possibly could to get them back doing what they want to do. It took some time, but I was able to get our open gyms running. We started our first soccer open gym October 22nd, and I think we ended right around Thanksgiving. It was getting really dark really early, and it may have even been snowing occasionally. But it was so great to see the kids back out playing. They were excited again. Then the section decided we were going to start winter sports, or we could start winter sports on November 30th. However, the governor's office still had a pause on high-risk sports. And high-risk sports would have been basketball. That was our winter sport, because swimming this year, we were stuck without a pool. Without high-risk sports able to go, there was some discussion about track and field. Now, we've had discussions in the past, I've had a few students come to me, can we do winter track? Winter track is an indoor sport. This year, the section decided, no indoor meets, we're only going to do outdoor meets. I saw this as an opportunity. I presented it to the principals, I presented it to Albert, to Tom, and they were all for it. I got our coaches on board, and we decided to try for the first time indoor track, outdoor. So it was really winter track. We were never going to run indoors. We made the commitment, even if there's a meet indoors, we're not going to do it. We're only going to run outdoors. And then the section again made a vote that we're not going to start now until January 4th. So what we did was, we had a running club for the month of December, and that was, like, the best weather ever for a running club in December. We had 25 kids sign up for it. 11 kids showed up consistently. And then January hit, and we started our official practices, and then it got cold, really cold. And we did have three meets scheduled, but unfortunately, we didn't get to do any of those meets due to weather. Once the snow was on track, nobody was willing to plow the tracks. But we did have, for the first time, winter track. So I got to see that there was some interest and excitement. You know, 11 kids, that may be something that we want to look at down the road as an increased opportunity for our students here at Rhinebeck. So where did we stand with basketball? Well, basketball was still a high-risk sport. We couldn't play basketball. Everyone's anxious, everyone wants to play basketball. And then finally, our governor came out on Friday, January 22nd, at 2:57 in the afternoon, and gave us the go-ahead to play basketball, and that was going to start February 1st. We had a week to put it together. And as soon as the kids heard it, the kids were, there was actually, like, an excitement in the hallways again. It was absolutely great to see. We had done some open gyms in basketball. Kids couldn't share a ball, they couldn't play against each other, they could shoot, basically. Once we got the go-ahead, we had basketball. We ran our varsity boys team, our JV boys team, and a JV girls team. The one that we were having a hard time getting in were the modifieds. And the middle school kids needed sports as much as the high school kids needed sports. So we were able to get creative. We put together an intramural program on the weekends. We had four or five weekends where we had three coaches come in. We had 15 boys sign up for it. We had 10 girls sign up for it. They came in for hour-and-a-half sessions. It was great. Kids, again, were excited. As you know, you know, we, while there wasn't a sectional tournament, there was some pretty memorable victories. I believe one was against Red Oak during a board meeting, I think, right? So the, with high-risk sports starting February 1, our section decided to take all three seasons that normally go over the course of the entire school year and condense it into between February 1 and June 12, which on paper sounded really good, and it was really good for the kids. But I'm telling you, this is the most exhausted I've ever been in terms of trying to get all of this accomplished. But it's great to see the kids doing what they like to do. I commonly tell people, oddly enough, here, all these years, I thought they really came to school just to be in global history and geography. I'm learning that may not be the case now. The state did indeed cancel all state championships, which gave us a little freedom in that spring season. So the section has decided, we did decide to do some sectional championships. There were no sectional championships for the winter season, but for the fall, too, season, as we were calling it, and the spring season, there are sectional championships. As you know, in terms of highlights, some of us did, some of us were successful in the section championship, and I'll go to that in a second. Highlights for the year, academic recognition, student athletes, student athletes, student always first. We have two different academic awards that we can receive. We can receive them from the league and then receive them from the state. So far, we have had to submit our grades for the fall athletes and the winter athletes. We had 44 fall and winter athletes, varsity athletes, that during their season maintain an average of 90 or above. That falls in line percentage-wise. It's actually above where we have been in the past. It's up around 60% of our athletes on the varsity level that are going to be recognized at the academic award ceremony, June 7th, I believe that is. So they will get that. In addition to that, we have another academic award that we can receive, and that is a team, I'm not sure what's going on there. Okay, there we go. A team academic award. Now, for that, more than 75% of the team has to have a cumulative average of 90 or above. For our fall and winter teams, all of our teams have done that. Last year, so there are other awards that we can qualify for after that. So our spring sports are based upon the June report card. Once I have those grades, there's a good chance we could qualify once again for the School of Excellence Award, which would mean that 75% or more of our teams have achieved this. We can get a nice plaque from the state, it's out there in the trophy case. So, highlight academics always first. We know that kids that play sports, they tend to do better in the classroom. They like the structure, they like the schedule, and it definitely shows. In terms of athletic recognition, as I said, all of our fall teams, you guys mentioned it, all of our fall teams qualify for the sectional tournament. The way it's looking right now, all of our spring teams will qualify as well. Those tournaments are going to look a little different, especially track and field. Tennis is not having one, golf is having one. So it's a little different for each sport. In terms of this year so far, our, there's a delay here, there's a lag, I'm not quite sure why. Our varsity boys soccer team did indeed win the Section 9 Class C championship. And I believe, if you see there in the picture, they're holding up four, I think you can't even see the picture. I can, they're holding up four fingers, because I believe that's their fourth in a row. I, maybe I'm a little biased, but I like to think that had we had a state championship in the fall season, I think that we would have definitely been back to Middletown with the boys soccer team. And I really think our girls soccer team would have gone a little bit further had we played in the fall. Okay. Other accomplishments for the year. We tried something new. I had this idea. I'd seen some other schools do it. We've had occasionally a few students sign their college commitment. And Division III started this new commitment letter. It's like a promise note that you're going to agree to play there. We've had Division I athletes, the Division III athletes, we've had more of those. This year, I decided to do them all on one day. It was kind of a nice thing, and it's something that I'm going to continue to do. I look forward to it in the future, because everyone will be able to be in the same room at the same time. What we did, we had seven athletes come with their teammates, with their families, for a 15-minute block throughout the afternoon on May 14th. And they signed their commitment letters to go on to the next level and play. It was nice to see them. They were excited, their teammates were excited. It was a great day. Anything we can do to keep the excitement going for them is a great thing. I'm not sure why this is not doing what it's supposed to do, but, you know, that's technology, right? In terms of next year, and I am hoping for a, it's really behind. I'm hoping for a return to normal, and everything we're hearing says we're going back to normal, right? Which means that fall sports will be starting on Monday, August 23rd. And modified sports will be starting on Thursday, September 9th. I anticipate we're going to have a full season. I anticipate everything's going to be great. I am planning for the Andy Bennett Tournament to be Columbus Day weekend again, which would be Saturday, October 9th, acts kind of as our homecoming. I'm hoping that it will be, you know, well-attended, and it will be a great time for everybody. That is what I have. Not quite 30 minutes. I tried. Questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I just want to say, first, I love the signing thing. I love seeing that on Twitter. I think that's great for the kids. And I just want to thank you for this year. I mean, a lot of people might have just said, you know what, forget it. And it's great for the kids, and, you know, thank you for all the work you did.
Thank you for your support as well, because there were boards of education that were not supportive of Intersalaska Athletics. You know, you go back to, you know, the waves and learning to surf. Sports teaches us to handle adversity, right? I may have the perfect scouting report on a team, but when it comes time to play that game, things may go bad real quick, and I got a change on the fly. And that's really what we've been doing all year, and, you know, I've been trying to reemphasize that with my students. Remember, this is no different, right? It's just, you know, a mask.
And even in the paper, the kids were quoted, you know, they didn't get the season they wanted, but they were so happy for what they had and appreciative of it, and it was great. Thank you for being here, as always.
Should go back over there.
I also want to thank you, Steve. I mentioned this to you before. I think that every kid should be on a team, whether it's athletic or whether it's in drama, whether it's in any sort of organized way that kids are connected to each other. To have a product or to have some sort of call-to-duty or performance changes their life. And I just commend you for sticking with it and defining every single time there was even a crack that we could get them together. You were right there to say, let's do it. And I commend you for that. And I second Diane, I think, the signing thing of recognizing and showing that there are students here who are going to play in college. And, like, celebrating that is important, because for those kids, it's what brings them here every day. So, you know, thank you for adding that as well. I think it's a great recognition.
Okay, so now we move on to our board committee reports. Let us governance first. Uh, let's governance first.
That's me.
That's Matt.
Yep. Um, yes, so the governance committee met on May 12th and discussed a number of items. Uh, the first one being possibly transitioning to a electronic form of board books, uh, called Board Docs. Um, we use hard copies now, and we talked about the potential benefits of moving to an electronic format, such as the ability to search terms, uh, quick, quickly, as opposed to going through hard copies. Um, no decisions were made in this regard, but we did talk about possibly having a representative from Board Docs, um, give an explanation, explanatory presentation at some point on the, on the, on the application. Um, the committee also discussed the, uh, format of the board meeting agendas, uh, really around, um, categorizing the agenda, uh, based on certain reoccurring topics, such as personnel matters, finance matters, but whatever. Um, we briefly talked about the logistics for the board retreat this, later this summer. Um, we talked about possibly adopting protocols around board operations, uh, looking at a, uh, sample policy from another district, and we also discussed the process for periodically reviewing district policies. Um, there were two decisions that came out of this meeting. Um, we did agree to recommend that the board agenda be reviewed, again, in order to categorize certain types of reoccurring items. Um, and I guess the big takeaway here would be, uh, an agreement to recommend the policy committee be reformed, um, and that this new committee be responsible for reviewing different sections of the district, district policies on a regular basis, in order to ensure that, uh, current policies are up to date and being followed. Um, and, uh, Steve Jenkins agreed to, uh, chair that committee, which was very good. That's all I have. All right, strike that last part.
Is there, uh, any questions?
I just have a question in particular regarding the, um, the consent agenda. Um, I'm just wondering if we have, you know, an idea of what we consider to be routine approval items that we will put on a consent agenda, and, because I feel right now that our consent agenda is maybe overly broad, and, you know, before it was overly narrow, where we didn't have very many things on the consent agenda that we could have, but now I feel like most of our agenda is consent items that maybe we should be discussing.
I actually had a question about that, Mark, myself, because I wasn't sure myself as, as to what could go on the consent agenda versus what, what, what required a separate vote. Um, so I think it is sort of an open question on what, what should be considered routine and what's not, um, because right now, it doesn't really seem to be all that clear on what, what can go on the consent agenda, um, versus what needs to be specifically called out. I don't know, Diane or Steve or Albert, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, so what I would say is that the, one thing I wanted to say is that, you know, any board member could also pull anything from the consent agenda, so there's, if there's ever anything that you, you know, want to pull out, you can always do that. But, I mean, we talked about our understanding is pretty, but there isn't anything that can't, you know, except, um, we have to, you know, things that have to be read into the minutes can't be on the consent agenda, but generally, any other normal business that we are, have motions on can be part of the consent agenda. There's not like specific.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we had to have to add in is, we actually have to take action to approve the consent agenda. Like, also, not, not in, just when it goes out in the board packet, saying that you could pull it, but just at the meeting as well, say, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, like, meaning just to approve the agenda, and then, then to approve the consent items. I think that's a process thing. One of the, um, to Mark's question, one of the goals would be to make that more clear of like, what is in there, that, that's why having categorical would make, you know, some, some of that more clear of what it is. But we, you know, we did do a little bit of research on that, and it's a very vague description, because it's really up to the board's, um, decision-making. It's just, at each meeting, we, we're, we need to add a motion to say, I need a motion to approve the, the agenda, and then.
Like, for.
Right, like, we've always tried to pull out, uh, like donations or anything.
Right, I was going to say, like, item 7.2, is that not on the consent agenda because we want to publicly acknowledge the, the gift, I assume?
So, that's why I pulled it out, because previously it was, and then there was a time when it was pulled.
Right, but if it wasn't for that, we would have had an entire agenda of.
Which I'm not, I'm okay, but.
Right.
But is there something specific, you know, there's cer, certain things you think shouldn't be in the consent agenda? Was it something that caught your attention, or was it just more general?
Um, yeah, just a general comment, really, but, you know, I feel like, if I had time to really analyze it, that I would come up with some things that I think ought to be on the regular agenda and not the consent agenda, like the donations. Um, but, I think it's something we should be, you know, considering.
Any other questions?
I would just add, I'm, I'm actually okay with it being, you know, most things in there, because I have always felt like, if there was something I'm allowed to discuss, that any we could, any of us could ask to pull it from the consent agenda to, to discuss it. So, I'm just, to present an opposite point of view, though, I'm okay with it.
And I guess for the public, I mean, the consent agenda just means, I'm not reading it out, it's still in the minutes, it's still, you know, everyone can still read the items that are there, they're not like secret or anything, they're, they're, they're listed there for anyone reading the agenda. Anything else anybody wants to add? Okay. Uh, move on to strategic planning, those are mine, um, you have them in front of you, so there's no, um, not looking any, and any inputs, I'm not going to read the items here, but if anyone has any questions for the committee, take those. Okay, so the next committee is, uh, performance monitoring.
Um, so that's mine, I apologize, it's not in the packets, um, but we met on May 20th, and, um, we discussed a few topics. The first one was our high school course selections, so the committee, uh, reviewed enrollment of the high school course selections, and we discussed some observable trends that we saw. Um, then we discussed, um, policy. So, the committee reviewed the administrative series of policies, um, there were a number from the 3200s, um, and Mr. Cousins will consult legal counsel for clarification of policy 3240, which is line and staff relations. And for the policy 3210, which is the administrative team, the committee will seek additional model policies for further review, just so we have a clearer understanding of what that policy actually means. Um, and then, uh, we just wrapped up to talk about what we want to talk about at our next meeting, and the committee members are requesting data on student academic progress and plans for the summer recovery program at the middle and high school levels. So, we're just looking to see how the kids are doing, and making sure that they're achieving what they need to achieve, and what the plan is if they haven't, and if they need some sort of summer recovery. So, we meet again on the 17th.
Any questions? Uh, not to put you on the spot, but when you were talking about, uh, trends with the, uh, class schedule, were there, were there any, like, anything big that kind of jumped out?
Um, we were sort of, uh, looking at the, uh, the students in each class, you know, how many freshmen versus how many seniors were taking particular classes. Um, you know, we looked at the technology and STEM type classes, it was very boy-heavy and girl-light. Um, I know that there are many math classes that seem a little duplicated, so they want to just investigate how to streamline some of those courses. So, those were some of the trends, am I correct with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, we're going to move on then to good news. Anyone have any good news to share?
I believe the PTSO book fair is online, I think I did see that, which I think it's open for at least another week or so.
I sent out a, a reminder of that today, too.
Okay, uh, any old business?
Uh, we are still recruiting, any, um, anyone out there, in the sound of my voice, that wants to be, serve as a, a parent rep on committees, or, I know the PTSO is looking for leadership positions, uh, if you want to reach out, I can get you connected to some great opportunities.
All right, uh, another opportunity for public comment. Seeing none, uh, any other? Okay, we're going to move on to our action items. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a grant award in the amount of $350 from the Rhinebeck PTSO in support of a senior essay project submitted by Sarah Ward?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Obviously, we thank the PTSO, and this is an example of why they need some volunteers. All those in favor? Okay, her motion passes, and then we get to the session. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?